Library Board of Trustees meeting for July 23rd here at the Lakeville Library. And attending the meeting are Ruth Gross, trustee, Nancy LaFave, trustee, Patrick Marshall, trustee, Jennifer Jones, library director, and Lake Kim is recording. Is there anyone else recording? No? All right. So we will call the meeting to order at an exciting 9:02 a.m. And I will start with the secretary's report.
I move that we accept the secretary's report as written since we have all presumably read it at this point. Second.
First and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? Excution? All right. Financial report, FY25 wrap-up. Happy New Year.
Yeah. So as you can see, we were still, despite our many overages, we came in under budget. I don't have the final numbers from accounting, but we did come in under budget.
Even with 1,029.3% on our water service.
Yes. I was pleasantly surprised when I put in for encumbrance for the final water bill because it hadn't come in by the deadline. I was a little concerned, so I was like, let's put it up pretty high, just in case. And then when the water bill came in, it was under $400. So it was not bad. But I'm anticipating that the next one that I get for the end-June-July dates are gonna be, it's gonna be pretty high.
Sprinkler.
Yeah.
And we have no word on our...
I haven't heard anything yet.
Well, that's a shame.
I mean, it's not often you're gonna see 1,000% over budget.
Ever. That's true.
Pocono's assy.
I'm sure they are.
All right. So you said you're still waiting on the rest of FY25?
Just the, like, final report from accounting, just to square everything out. But I'm pretty sure everything is all set. I kept checking on bills, so everything's submitted.
FY26?
So we have our first FY26 report, and we have just spent 2.4%. So nothing big yet. And I just got all the stuff from sales for the assessment and the overdrive assessment and stuff, so that'll come out. And that'll come out of the dues and subscriptions, so that line will look like it's pretty much spent down the next time. So I included our other funds. I still have to work on finding out what's going on with Savas.
Can you remind us again, just with the building and grounds?
So the building and grounds...
Washing.
That was the power washing?
That's what I thought, but I couldn't remember.
Or soft washings, I should say.
Looks really good.
Yeah. Yeah. So most of our stuff that comes from, like, buildings and grounds repair, like Paul takes care of a lot of that out of his budget, so I don't actually see when the plumber comes or anything. I don't see those invoices.
But we know they've been here.
There's no gifts to report right now on that one.
Director's report.
So we have our magazine renewal coming up. Pammy came up with some possible additions and some possible cancellations due to lack of interest. So we actually had a request to add The Atlantic and Mother Earth News, and we've also had a request for The Boston Herald. So I'll take a look at the Sunday edition, but I just wanted to note that the price of The Boston Globe for just Sunday has increased by $10 on plump. So it's like $15 a paper right now. It's really expensive.
So just watch with the Herald too, because we haven't been able to get it, because they, at least in our area, they do not do delivery. So you can only get it in the mail. And when we used to get it in the mail, you might get it the same week that it's published.
We've been having issues with Taunton Daily Gazette with that reason. It's through the mail, and we're probably a good three or four days behind.
And the Herald was far worse. This is even pre-COVID.
Yeah, it's a daily.
It's a daily?
It's a daily.
Well, that doesn't help. Then it's three or four days.
Well, this was pre-COVID with the Herald too, that you would get, there'd be like a day you'd get like five editions, because you're catching up from like a month ago. But you, and they, we tried to get it on delivery as far as the, oops, the delivery route. The Herald doesn't do that.
You're probably so good we are, though.
So it could be a difference, but just watch with that.
Are these newspapers read?
People read them now that I've moved them out here where people can see them. And we had a specific patron came in who said, oh, you have The Boston Globe and you don't have The Herald. So he wanted to get some news from The Herald. So yeah, I said I'd look into it. And then Youth Services Story Hours have been very well attended, including the Thursday Afternoon Group. So Teresa's gonna see if there's interest in having the afternoon story hour return as a full-time thing. So if she does that, steam afternoons will get bumped to Mondays or Tuesdays. She had Playing with Purpose Wednesday mornings, and that ended with strong attendance. It started off a little slow. And the music time has been going well during the summer. They made me outside today with bubble dance party, I think, or mini bubble dance party. And then Playing with Purpose will return in September. For the kickoff for summer reading, we had Flying High Dogs, and we had a pretty good crowd. The weather held. We had 175 people in attendance. And then...
It was outdoors.
It was outdoors, and the sprinklers did go off because the timer was off. So I did have to shut off the sprinklers very quick.
And then we had clean Flying High Dogs.
We did. We're people who was watching the Flying High Dogs. The family movie matinees have returned for the summer. Dogman was the first show. Attendance was lower than expected, but Teresa hopes it will pick up for the other two movies she has planned. And we had just over 100 childrens and teens registered by the end of the month. So we've got a lot of things coming up still. Stuffed Animal Sleepover, which snack is that? The next bubble dance party. And we wrap up with Bryson Lang's Juggling and Comedy Show. So for candy bar bingo for adults, I had two players, even though everybody kept saying, oh, that sounds great, I'll come. Nobody really showed, except for the two women. And they played about three or four rounds of bingo with me, and they walked away with all the candy. I had bought some extras just in case, so I just kept playing until they won it all. Novelties in June had to be postponed due to the power outage that we had. So Pammy was able to reschedule to a date earlier this month, so they didn't miss two months in a row. They had to take a break because of the concerts on Tuesday nights. So in August, author Debbie Graham Leard, who came to discuss her books, and she really didn't get a huge attendance at that time, is gonna come to the book club. We have several copies of her books in her series, her mystery series, for them to read. And she'll talk with them about writing the mystery series. So hopefully we'll get a lot of great attendance for that. And the invitations have gone out for the anniversary celebration. I'm working on the gallery show, and we'll install it on August 2nd. There's a few upcoming programs that I've already mentioned, plus the Sales Library Tour and Showcase. I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the meeting. Bay State Softwash did a great job with the Three Sides of the Building. Actually, it came out better than I expected. I have to say, I was a little nervous that it wouldn't, you know, all the gunk wouldn't come off, but a lot of it did.
Really worked hard on it.
The plumber came out to look at the leaks and figure out what parts to order, so we're waiting for him to return. The gutters need cleaning, so I've reached out to Paul to see if he has a particular cleaner he uses for the town buildings. And then next month, I'm gonna start seeking out irrigation companies so we can start to look at fixing it. And I noticed there's a pipe in that garden at the corner of the meeting room that's out of the dirt, so it must be broken. I'm just guessing. It's something related to irrigation. It's a little flexible hose that's out in the... Yeah. So we had our new staff member Nicholas Vessel started on July 1st. So he comes to us from a background in retail, and he plans to pursue a teaching degree and has been something in the Taunton School system lately. So he's been very helpful in learning a lot since he hasn't gotten any library background so far, but very eager to learn everything. I'm working on the annual report information survey, and we'll have that ready soon for signatures. It's due August 15th. And the financial report opens next month, and I will try to get that done as quickly as possible, hopefully by the end of the month. Summer reading for all ages is going to end by August 9th. The kids end a little bit earlier than the adults. But I only have one entry so far for summer reading for the adults, and I have so many little tchotchke prizes to give away. So hopefully I get more entries. And I just wanted to give a heads up that there's a Purple Heart Ceremony scheduled for 1:00 p.m. next Wednesday, July 30th on Center Stage. And we have ordered some equipment, audio-related cables and stuff, to make sure they'll be all set in case they need a microphone and stand. The Friends still on break. Their summer gathering is in August. And the sign-up sheet is out. The Story Walk, dedication to Basile Coranos, happened Saturday, July 12th. Her family was there. Several friends were there. Teresa and I stopped by to, and they were very pleased with the Story Walk, and they appreciated it, the dedication to Basile, who was a reading specialist in public schools. Very appropriate. And then the reception for the Guild Natural Science Illustrators was packed, and everybody seemed to enjoy meeting the artist while sipping these very lovely mocktails made by Traveling Spirit. Trish and Wendy from the Guild seemed very pleased with the turnout and very happy with how, you know, smoothly it ran. Ruth, Joanne, and I tried to make everything easy for them. And then the next gallery exhibit is the library, followed by Dan Barber featuring his photography.
All right. Policy list review, gifts and donations.
So I have for you, just to present the first time, we can vote on it next month, is just the gift and donation policy. And behind it, and I realize I should have made it in color so you could see all the various changes, but your copy, your copy and your email of the package should have all the color. But a lot of it is just changing the language from gifts to donations, because a lot of the, the beginning of it has to deal with materials that get donated, and then if we don't use them, they go to the Friends. So I wanted to make sure it's sort of relevant to what, you know, a gift can also mean money, so wanting to separate it from monetary.
Wanted to say donations?
I wanted to say donations of new or used materials rather than gifts of new or used books.
I was looking to the old policy.
So yeah, the old policy versus the new. So I set up the policy sort of in the format we've been using to...
This is the old one?
The top one is the old one.
Do you want this one to say donations?
I could.
The policy statement.
Or I could put gifts and donations.
Oh, that sounds good.
I didn't wanna add part of the, in part of the bit about donated materials, that we reserve the right to refuse anything.
People have to understand that if it's been stored in the basement or has been wet, you could destroy a whole collection.
Well, it's more than that. I mean, some books just are not needed anymore. The example I had the other day was Word Perfect for Dummies, or whatever.
Who's doing Word Perfect?
Well, yeah. I mean, it's, yes, exactly. There's the question. So getting it to the library may feel good and altruistic, but it just means the library has to get rid of it. So...
Do we need a line in the guidelines for, I'm thinking more for donated materials, something to the effect of, you know, like, once they are gifted to the library, that they are the library and you've...
Can't have them back?
Well, we have the right to do with them.
Well, there's the line, and in the original policy, it was, you know, conditions may be imposed relating to any gift. So then I put, "by the donor," so that, that kinda, but I can say...
Or even if just no, you know, once donated, items become the property of the library and no conditions or something like that. I just think of...
Once donated items become...
And I'm thinking of that person that donates the Word Perfect book, and we give it to the Friends, but they come in a year later looking, why isn't it on the show? And I know that's a condition, but, I mean, it's...
Right. Yeah, I think a lot of people want their books to be front and center.
Well, and also, I mean, as much as we love, and it's helpful, like, when people donate materials and we'll put the book plate in it or whatever, but, you know, if it's the latest whatever AI book, but 10 years from now, that AI book, but yet I'm the grandson of that person, and I wanna come in, why isn't that book here?
It did mention too, in the guidelines for monetary donations, about memorial items, that they will be subject to the same collection maintenance procedures as all other materials.
Yeah, no, that's...
People, I think, don't you find generally people are really good about that unless they have a specific book that we may not have or not want?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't come across anybody who's demanded that their donation...
People would just please that they can offload.
Yeah.
I mean, our generation just says so much.
I'm thinking more of the great exception that...
Yeah. Somebody's gonna come in and say, why didn't you add it? We didn't need it. Yeah. It's tough with donations. People get very attached or, I don't know, emotional about it sometimes. Yeah.
I know. I mean, we've had a few just this year, just who've gone not to the library, but to the Friends book sale, and just, and then go looking in the book sale, why isn't it in the book sale? That's exactly what you would say, because it was covered in dust and moss and mold and whatever else.
And we do have, it talks about the conditions of the material.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Add it up.
That's really important. People know, even if you leave it out on the, under the protocol, and we have a wet spell over a weekend or something like that, it can destroy the material. It can disstore all the moisture.
All right. So we'll vote on that next month. We'll pick for it. All right. Memorial benches.
So in the process of moving a couple of the benches for the reception, one of them has separated in spot. The back has separated, and the leg has separated. So we need to look at how we can fix that. And it seems like it's been fixed before, so at this point, it might not be something we can fix. And how do we wanna proceed with, do we replace it, put the plaque back on?
Yeah. Most of these, they're teak. They were teak, and Teddy wanted to paint it white instead of natural, because they would go with the building. But anyways, we never really talked about that, because it was a long time down the road, which is 20 years, really, when you think about it. They stood up really well. They've been painted another time.
Offer the families the chance to replace them.
I don't know. What are you doing?
We don't have, we don't have them anymore, but just...
We need to find out what other people do. That would be famous, or get me to give them some ideas of how people do.
So let's see if we can fix it first, because if it's just separate, it might be just a matter of taking a rubber mallet and...
Right. It might be the fact that everything's dried out so much that it's loosened up, because we haven't had that extreme. And there's nothing like the bricks to bake everything.
Yeah, maybe just put a screw in.
But it probably would be good to find out how we'd wanna, I would assume, they're approaching their end of life more than...
Yeah.
And also, that'd be something that we wanna find out, what they do in terms of, do they replace things? What did this budget allow?
No, it's, all of them look like they may have some spots where the wood is no longer...
Punky.
Yeah. Last thing we want is somebody sitting down and that they're falling apart.
No, we don't want that, because a fall would be hard, besides a fall. So you're gonna look into finding out what our Friends and neighbors are doing and stuff, similar issues.
Okay. And then assuming to memorial requests?
So I wanted to do an update as well as a recent phone call I had. So we do have the materials in for the Bornstein, so I'll get the information for the plaque too, so we can get that. And then I think I'll reach out to Doris Kuluchi to see if she wants to do some sort of little dedication type thing like we did for Basile's Story Walk. And then I got a phone call that one of our longtime patrons passed, and, or he was very enthusiastic. I don't know how long he'd been coming, but he would come in with his aides, and he passed the week before last. And I spoke to his son, who asked if there was something that, like, a wing or a study room or something that he could, you know, name after his father. So I said I'd have to get back to him, because I'm not sure what's available. And I also don't have any idea of what he's talking about in terms of a donation.
Because I believe the bookcases were 1,000 when we did it years ago. That was from the Capital Campaign. That's how, one of the ways we raised money. The actual room areas, we haven't donated, we haven't had donations to name them. We've suggested people in town that were businesses, for instance, Great Ponds Gallery was given by, originally by Clement, and then it became Eastern Bank.
Yeah.
So it's really the Eastern Bank, Great Ponds Gallery. And then the front area in front of the clock, the entrance is by, for both Mr. and Mrs. Savas, because they had given us a huge amount in the investment. And then we did areas for directors. We've done areas, and we have the Mary Fuller Room, which is a reference room here, and the Earl Biggers Room, which were two people that were very much involved, with both the Friends and the Historic Library. And then this is the Reynolds Room, which is for Brian, who has been historical commission chair and president of the society for many, many years. So those are the types of things that we've done. Can you think of any other that I missed?
They use the young adults.
Kitchen was Chase's, I think. Chase family, because they had given the, they actually donated the kitchen. So we did that. But initially, we had, the Capital Campaign said that if someone wants to dedicate the whole library, we would definitely call it that, whatever their surname was, library. But no one came forward to do that. It meant billions of dollars. So I don't know if there's actually a monetary thing, other than I remember the bookcases down there. Those are the ones that are placked. And there's still a lot of those that haven't been placked. Did he have a preference on any kind of material?
He was all over the place, really, not to, like, invade any privacy, but yeah, he had a wide variety of interests.
Maybe if it, I don't know if he knows what he's, I think I would find out what he actually thinking about in terms of financials. And he might mention the fact that the bookcases have been $1,000 to get the plaque.
It's a very nice thing to do, but it's lovely.
Yeah. It's very sad to hear he had passed. A little missing. Yeah. And then the, speaking also of the memorial request, the audio is almost finished.
Oh, so that's the chase.
So I reached out to the email I had to Jonathan Chase and let him know what we were doing, and offered to talk to him, like, if we wanted to do a plaque in there somewhere about the audio, which I think would be nice. And then if they wanted to do some sort of photo opportunity, and to really get some significant attention to the fact that they donated the $50,000.
A long way to do.
Yeah. Yeah, it was April of '23. But yeah, so he said he has some time next week or the week after, so I'll figure out a time to talk to him.
Nice.
Karen too, because that's his sister.
Visit in July by the NBLC director.
So we're on for noon July 31st, and we will be providing lunch. So they...
Do you need us to provide lunch?
Um, I think we're okay.
Want us to do sweets or something, we said?
I mean, what I was planning was to just get trays of sandwiches and chips, and maybe some salads from Hannaford to do my usual Hannaford order. And then I was thinking just using state money for it, because it's like a program.
It's gonna be in the gallery?
It's gonna be in the gallery. It's gonna be a showcase.
Is there an issue with storytelling?
She is going to, we've talked about it, and that's why I pushed it back to noon, because it should have story time cleared out. She's gonna try to end a little earlier, head back to activities, and then I should have time to throw everything on the table and rearrange.
So are we gonna have seating?
Yeah. So I have to kind of figure out what's the best based on how many people are coming. So Libby O'Neil, who's the director of the Boydin Library, is kind of the point person for this, and she's getting a head count, so I'll know how many people are coming. I have invited Senator Roberts and Representative Oral to come as well. I haven't heard from them yet, but I did invite them.
Do you want us there?
It would be great if you could make it too. I know, Patrick, are you gonna come?
Yeah, I can help you out too with...
We all can help, and or before. I already said that I would do floor pieces, so if we decide on, are we gonna use round tables?
I mean, we don't really have round.
Do we have round tables?
No.
You don't have round tables?
We have rectangles.
Because of church.
We have squares.
No, I felt we used them when we had the, when we did the dedication of the library. We had some, we had a big party here for the building committee groups. Thought we had round tables.
They might have been rented.
I don't know.
Yeah. This is viewed as a very simple thing, because Maureen's gonna have to move, just as we're gonna have to move to get the room there, Maureen's gonna have to move to get to the next stop. But the idea here is that being kind of centrally located, anyone that wanted to come and meet Maureen and Seager can come in, and some of the legislatures that maybe didn't make legislative breakfast, being far away can...
Audience seating more, and some tables around the edge, or?
I don't even, I think it's kind of more like some chairs if people wanna sit, but not like chairs for everybody type of thing.
Should we put like maybe, like for the last reception, we put card tables with four chairs around, but have plenty of mingle space and...
Let me see, or the smaller rectangular tables for seating for four or three?
Just a rough idea of how many would last.
Lasted 16.
Hundred?
It was like eight or nine. It wasn't a high number. Maybe it's, but that was a while ago, so it probably be up now.
So if we put four card tables, just, you know...
Then somebody could sit if they needed to.
And people could sit if they'd like to.
We do cluster chairs and stuff like that too for some...
Because I don't think, they're not looking at, as far as I know, Libby would know more, but they're not looking at anybody really doing a big speech or presentation. There's gonna be video going of, like, what libraries, which I gotta get my stuff in, but slides of what libraries are doing. Maureen may say something really quick.
They wanted, is she doing it, is she doing the flyers just digitally, or are we having, like, a table on flyers?
That I'm not fully clear on. My thing... That I'm not fully clear on. My, my thinking was that they were looking to have it digitally, so that, like a slideshow of, hey, this is what all the libraries are doing. There may be some physical flyers too, that people could take, but, um, I think it's more or less what people were, have sent in, as far as, just to show what libraries are doing, but very low-key as far as, but trying to get everyone an opportunity to meet and greet.
Yeah.
So is it our whole Southeast District, or is it the whole Sales?
It's the whole Sales.
Sales?
Has been invited to showcase. The, the people that aren't on the tour have been invited to showcase here. But I don't know how many people are gonna take us, take that offer and actually do it.
Yeah.
We could have a lot of tables, we need a lot of laptops on.
Probably not.
Would it showcase me putting slides up, or?
So that I'm not, I don't think.
They're looking at, so they're just, it's, the idea is just showing what libraries, for those libraries, especially not on the tour, like maybe have the flyer of what your summer reading programs are, or are you doing something unique?
Yeah.
That's a neat program. And again, just showing it on, I think the idea is, I don't know who it is that's putting it together, but the digital slide of presentation of, very low-key, very simple.
One long table, that would be sufficient for people to put flyers.
Not sure even how many physical flyers, I think, because I know that they're looking to have people send email the information to whoever it is that's putting, and I can't remember, that's putting the slideshow together. I think it's, the focus is more on the slideshow.
I think Libby's supposed to get me the final number by Monday, just in case I have to do special orders for sandwiches, because Hannaford needs a turnaround time of twenty-four hours, so. I can put the order in the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, based on the numbers.
I'm still chilling, I don't, I don't get the vibe that it'll be a huge
Yeah.
thing here.
That's all right.
So it's not something that, I mean, on, on the plus side, we don't really have to put a lot of, I've ruined a room setup. I mean, obviously, no matter what, I know Jennifer in Lakeville does it right anyways, but
Of course, of course.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a big, you're not looking at like forty, fifty, sixty people kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like it's gonna be small, but I just wanted to have it set up nicely, and then she could do a little tour.
So what time is it? Anticipating, moving stuff around?
So probably eleven fifteen to eleven thirty. And I'll pick up the sandwiches probably in the morning, before I come in.
Is, um, okay. Do you want Nancy to make desserts?
That would be.
She had said she would make, uh...
Who said?
You had said you would make gluten-free.
I would make a gluten-free dessert, and also, um, I would do flowers.
Okay.
I don't make.
Yeah.
Cookies or something like that.
Yeah, I think they would usually do that. Because when you looked at the tour stop, they didn't mention lunch at all, and we were here at noon, and then it's like, what about lunch? So. We don't want people angry, as you're going on tour.
Especially the later letters on the tour. All right, uh, DPW offer for Library of Things.
Jennifer Jewell from DPW contacted me and said, oh, I saw you have a electric leaf blower. Do you have a library of things? And I said, well, we have a library of things of sorts.
An electric leaf blower.
A leaf blower, and I guess the hotspots would probably technically count as a library of things.
I used one, and it was great.
Yeah. So, she mentioned that the Department of Environmental Protection, I think DEP, um, has this system where they give money to towns based on points, from what I was understanding from our conversation. And they get points if the library has a library of things.
Good.
And I, she's, she wasn't sure of the details, like if you have to have a certain number of library of things, or that, but it could get them points for their grants.
Source information, or should I look it up?
I can get more information from her, but she had said that, um, DPW would be happy to also, they have a little bit of funding that they could assist us with starting more.
Would they like to build a library of things?
That's a hard problem.
Things do people need occasionally, but not something that they would need to want to buy, because maybe they couldn't store it, or something like that?
A sewing machine.
A sewing machine?
A cricket printer.
Oh, yeah.
Um, these are what I've seen at other libraries.
Metal detector was really popular.
Okay.
And I also mentioned, a lot of libraries have a seed lending library. We don't.
Seeing now, you've got our interest.
Next spring.
So.
Yay, garden club.
That, that particular one might be a good one for DPW to help.
Well, if you have a smart, very small space, or you're just doing containers, if you get a packet of seeds, you have overkill in terms of how many seeds you have. So most people end up just holding on to them until they're no longer in date.
And then you plant them in my garden, and they come up.
If you only need, you wanna take, you know, five seeds is, is a good thing for some.
We used to separate them out, so I've done seed libraries in Plymouth and in Metropoysit. So we would get little coin envelopes, and separate them out, and give people five to ten, or a pinch, if they were really tiny, like radish seeds or something, and just stick them in there. Stick them in the pocket, write what it is, and put it into some sort of, like, most of the time, it was an old card catalog.
Yeah, something with that they could stand up?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to find some furnishings that will house this seed lending library. But that might be something that...
Um, I might have something, I'm, I'm divesting.
And that might be them testing the audio.
All right.
Okay, that sounds great.
Might be them testing.
Where are we storing all these things?
That's a good question. Um, there is some space over behind the circulation desk, that set of shelving that really isn't used right now, except for storage and things. Um, but I, I'll have to talk with, with Jennifer at DPW about some things and see, you know, what they, what they would be willing to help out with, so.
Yeah. Uh, reimbursement for Jay Jones?
So I had just put in, I didn't put it in the actual packet you have, but, uh, the reimbursement from the air conditioner.
Uh, yes.
Just wanted to take an official vote on it.
What was the amount for that?
That was three ninety-nine for the portable AC.
No change?
No change, no, it's just three ninety-nine.
So I would have a motion for a reimbursement for Jay Jones, meaning on a three ninety-nine?
I'll move.
There a second? Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
I guess. Wonder if that could be something, would we put in a lending library?
The portable AC?
Well.
Did your AC break? We got you covered.
We got you covered. First come, first served. Open the door, fifty people waiting outside.
I know.
Staff appreciation.
So, um, the Planning Committee for the town presented to the Select Board on July eighth? I think that was the meeting date. Um, and we're approved to have the Employee Appreciation on August twenty-eighth, that should be a Thursday.
It is.
And they wanna close the town buildings at noon. Um, so the Select Board had approved closing the town.
So it's gonna be the Poon Poon Lodge?
Yes, so it will be at Linn Farm Lodge.
So.
Some sort of, yeah, there will be some sort of training component that will be mandatory for everybody that is working that day, unless they take time. Part-timers who are not scheduled to work will not be mandated to come in. Um, and then, after the training, they will have the lunch luncheon, staff appreciation luncheon.
That's nice.
We normally are open till eight, and we are closed the Saturday, because it's the Saturday before Labor Day.
Labor Day weekend.
That's what it is.
You see that as an issue?
I have a feeling people are gonna complain about it.
Because of the timing?
Could we open back up?
But they're gonna be getting home earlier. Oh, you mean people in general?
So we'll be open from ten to twelve.
Right.
And then close the rest of the day.
Right.
Could we open back up at four?
Patrons will complain. If we give them enough notice, advanced notice, they can adjust their schedules, I think. It's when you just suddenly come up here, or you don't remember to check, or something, and you see the sign on the door that people, I think, get irritated.
Yeah, because you've also got all the town buildings closing.
How long do you think it will last? I mean, could we open back up at four or five?
They could actually put something out on the community sign, to the left of the Historic Townhouse.
Yeah.
That says, appreciation for our employees, or whatever, the all-town buildings are closing at noon on this date. If they put it out there soon enough, even people who are just driving by will go about it, as well as having it on the website, Facebook pages, and stuff like that. They should be fine. It's one day out of the whole year.
Yeah, it is just, it's so unfortunate that it comes before like our planned, you know, Labor Day weekend.
We're closed from noon on Thursday until Tuesday morning.
It's okay. We will be in here to check the building, though, in case something wacky happens, like AC and stuff like that.
One of us will come in, yeah.
I don't see it as an issue.
But, I'll ask, it doesn't seem to be a popular question, but could we open up, say from five to eight?
I mean, that's, that's a potential.
Well, we, we bring our people back, right? No, I, I don't think that's...
The, the idea was, uh, early release for everybody at two?
For one day out of the year, our patrons can be well-informed and plan ahead.
Okay.
Cool.
That means, is there anybody needs passes to?
They'll have to pick them up. But that I can individually email people for, if I look at the reservations, can remind them, pick it up.
Museum passes.
Maybe even a sign when you walk in the door, saying, just remember.
Big sign.
Big sign.
And red and yellow, and all the colors.
Get some balloons, whatever.
I know. And the other thing is, is that I probably would want to move, so some staff are scheduled twelve to eight. Just have everybody come in at ten.
Early.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah.
I really think that's smart, too.
Yep.
So that way, I'll have the most people participating in there.
Do we know what the training component is gonna be?
So the only thing they've really said is communications related. I believe it's gonna be run by in-house. It's not gonna be like a speaker or anything. I think it's in-house. But I should get more details. There is a meeting, um, of the Planning Committee next Wednesday.
Good.
All right. Anniversary, do we need to do like a, I know it's not on, but it just came up, do we need to do a vote or something that we are, at this state, we agree with the closing?
I would say, I know that we support the plans for the staff appreciation, townwide staff appreciation.
Any further discussion? Or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, abstentions. Uh, anniversary planning.
Um, so we've got the dates. The cake picnic is Tuesday, August fifth, five to seven. The gallery reception on August sixteenth, Saturday, from eleven to one. Trivia night is, uh, it's the end of the month. I forgot that date. But I'm gonna do Lakeville-related trivia, teen trivia, so I'll come up with that, twenty-fifth.
It's gonna be in August?
Yeah, August twenty-fifth, yeah.
On a Sunday?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, August twenty-fifth. At six. So that will be the three big sort of anniversary events. Um, the gallery show, um, I have some photographs, I have a plan for the room. Ruth is staying today to help pick out some photographs from the, um, former celebrations, and see if we can get some copies made of those from the scrapbooks.
And I have, still have the other scrapbook. We don't have one for twenty-twenty, because we were closed.
Do you want to, once we do these panels, do you want to save the panels whole?
If we're, you're making copies of photographs, and the originals are gonna go back into the other scrapbooks, yeah, I think.
Should we make copies? If, if you don't wanna keep them, then we could use the originals.
Well, if we have them copies, then we have something to pull from for twenty-fifth.
Twenty, thirty.
Yeah, it's only five years away. It's like, we say we do one every five years, so.
Yeah.
Then we have to do something big.
You know what it is, is our population, I'm not, it's not major turnover, but we're always gathering new residents.
Well, we do, and especially in story hour, younger people may not use it till then. So it's, it is a population that comes in regularly.
So it's important, yeah. I think it would be great for us to have an archive thing.
Okay, yeah.
And we do already have the scrapbooks and the one I'm finishing, and then things from before. We have a lot of updating in terms of some of the things, like listing people's names who have been employed, or trustees, friends, stuff like that.
Yeah, we can make a little, nice little framed photo of, or framed list of former staff.
We have those.
So, plugging along, getting ready. It's very soon, but I have to have it up, but it is, it's going.
Sounds good. All right, next meeting. Uh, my question in setting next meeting is, do we need an August meeting? May only bring it up because there's a number of Wednesdays I'm not around. But if there's anything pressing.
I mean, I only have to have you sign off on the...
Which I can pop in and do.
So you wanna plan for September?
So I'm just wondering if we skip August?
We could do relatively early in September, like the tenth or something like that.
Which, when's the sales board meeting? The sales membership meeting in August is the third?
Usually they're the second or third, they're the third.
Seventeenth is the third?
I am having a knee replacement on the eighteenth.
You are having a knee replacement?
Yes, so the tenth would work better for you.
The tenth would work better for me. I will be here on the seventeenth, but I don't get it. Then we'll do it the seventeenth.
September seventeenth?
It's either the ninth or the fourth.
That would be the sales board, probably. I don't have it listed.
What time is it?
Usually it's at ten, though.
Yeah.
Do you have a calendar?
They do. I don't have it right in front of me.
You wanna go get it?
Yeah, I can go get it.
You need some big information?
Twenty-first would be best, or the seventeenth would be best for me, because the twenty-fourth.
If you're having, you're new down on the eighteenth, you're not gonna feel like coming to a meeting, or you could Zoom, but you probably won't feel like Zooming either.
Well, I, I mean, I won't be going in until the next day.
So she'll want to be here?
No, I'm on the seventeenth, but not the twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, the twenty-fourth, I am, no.
Twenty-fourth, I'd actually...
And October, I'm questionable, so I may need you to pick me up.
I do love your service.
Seventeenth works for me.
Okay.
All right, so, on this thing on next Thursday, um, the thirty-first, the thirty-first, the MBLC Director, I have an eleven o'clock dentist appointment.
It's okay, I'll be here to help.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so I'll be in as soon as I can, but I can also change that.
No.
No.
It's not gonna be. This is not gonna be huge.
I'll send you the email.
Um, September seventeenth is the board meeting.
Yeah, September though.
Okay.
Do you want to be earlier?
Eight.
What time is it?
It's, the sales board meeting is at ten.
And that's here, or at sales?
Sales.
So you would need to be through... So you would need to be through by 9:40? Well, I'm not a board member, but.
Patrick is.
But I'm not. I'm just a board member now, not, I'm not like.
An officer?
Officer anymore.
All right.
Should we need?
No, the 17th works best for me, and I'd say. Yep, if I can get to the board meeting, I can get there, but this is more important.
Unless, I mean, I will see my doctor on August 7th. If there's any reason why I can't, I'll get right.
Right, what we're charging.
Well, we won't feed you. How's that?
Works.
All right, so we'll need.
I think that's after midnight.
Wednesday, the 17th at 9:00 AM. Is there anything else that needs to come before us? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn at 9:52.
I just wanted to say one thing before you adjourn. I think that you did a phenomenal job with, between Spillane's, where with the disabled area, the stone area, and you, and you were both reading and doing work around there.
Joanne and Teresa.
And you both, I appreciate the fact that you did all that.
Yes, and I was sprayed with vinegar. I see more popping up.
You're okay.
I've gotta spray it with vinegar.
I move weight, adjourn.
All righty, second. All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
9:52.